We're not supposed to be putting an into.
No, I know, but that they, that's one of Maple Plains issues with you and I.
Okay, you're recording?
Hmm. And like I said, we can inspect.
Good evening. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, September 27th, and I call the Maple Plains City Council meeting to order. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I am looking for a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda as is?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Do we have any visitors to be heard this evening? Were you given anything? Okay. Next item of business is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda for this evening includes meeting minutes from August 9th, City Council Workshop, August 23rd, City Council Workshop, August 23rd, City Council Regular Meeting, the 2021 Reconstruction Pay Request Number Two, and the Special Event Permit for Honor Community Education. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
Second by DeLong. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business this evening is Accounts Payable, and I'm going to turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I did, uh, put together just a couple items to call out. Let me get back to the right page here. So we're still kind of working on ARVIG, trying to get our sales tax taken off of that, a couple other issues. So we should have another credit next month. There were some hardware and engineering costs for the fiber install at Fire and, and the water treatment plant that, that kind of missed my radar when we were doing that project. So I, off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly what that was, somewhere in that $3,000 to $5,000 range. So it did add up quite a bit. That project is scheduled to be finalized next week, so fingers crossed that that moves forward. And then also just to note that that water repair, that, um, that water main break that happened in August was substantially more than usual. Our usual expenses are closer to $10,000 to $12,000, and this one was over $19,000, and that had something to do with the location of, I believe, an electric wire or something. They had to bring in a back truck, and that really jumped up the cost quite a bit. But we're still trying to get a better idea of that. And then we did approve, we added that partnership contribution to the Fire Relief Association based on the Fire Commission meeting from last time, so that is on the fire payables this month as well.
Any questions regarding Accounts Payable?
I do. Clarissa, brand networking, both for our general fund as well as the fire, is, 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 there's like $5,000. Does that have to do with the?
Yep, that's Jimmy Brand. That's the switching and the engineering for those, for that fiber install. Yes.
Other questions, Councilmember Fay or Miss Ed?
Oh, that's it.
All right. Any other questions, Council? All right. Hearing none. I am looking for a motion to approve the city check batch in the amount of $613,103,020.
So moved.
Moved by DeLong.
Second.
Second by Fay. All in favor of approving the city check batch?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. I'm looking for another motion to approve the fire partnership check batch totaling $57,072.35.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by DeLong. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the fire partnership check batch?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business is our staff reports, and those have all been submitted for review this month. We receive reports from our city planner, our director of public safety, our city engineer, our public works people service, our fire chief, and our city administrator. Any discussion or questions regarding any of those reports? Okay, hearing none. I'm looking for a motion to receive and accept all administrative reports.
So moved.
Moved by DeLong.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the administrative reports this month? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business is our Hennepin County Assessing Service Agreement, and I'm going to turn that over to our administrator.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item is coming back for review after council had some questions after the last presentation. I did hear back from, uh, I had a fairly in-depth conversation with county assessor, uh, oh, what's his name? Thank you, Atchison. And so he just kind of gave me a overview of their process, you know, he did kind of indicate. I don't know that he has readily available an itemized list of the expenses. He did indicate that the services that we're receiving, he feels are significantly more expensive than what we're actually being charged. That's kind of the overarching. I will note that the increase, that percentage increase, um, you know, does tie, you know, if you contemplate the, the amount, um, that our, uh, tax capacity or, or market values have increased plus inflation for the last couple of years. I mean, it, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me. I know that it is a, I mean, it's a long contract, and this is a four-year contract, even though we're already kind of a year and a half into it. So we are kind of locked in. I mean, if it's something that we do want to look at a different service and try and get a better value, we could certainly do that, but we're kind of almost halfway through this contract already, I guess. Unless we wanted to try and revise the contract so that it was a shorter contract, but at this point, I feel like our priorities are probably elsewhere.
What's the other option? Just go into a, a private service or?
Right.
I still have a hard time understanding how Hennepin, you didn't get a good answer from them, to be honest with you. I don't think the answer they got really addressed the question you asked, which, if I can paraphrase it, is for years you've been coming out and physically doing properties inspections, physically going into houses a certain number every year, and that was a block of work. That block does not exist now, and they're telling us they don't intend to do that. Yet, we've seen steady increases in that. By definition, they're not doing as much as they used to do, yet we're seeing an increase in the fee. I don't feel comfortable with this contract. We haven't approved the contract for the four years. I'd be supportive of approving it for another year, but in 2023, doing an RFP on, on assessment services to try to figure out if we are getting good value. At that point, we keep them honest. Then we can at least ask for what things we want done versus a contract that basically says they're supposed to be doing it, and they're not.
Yeah, and I get that. I do think that Josh Hugland addressed that when he was asking, because he was a lot more familiar with the process than he is the contract and the financial end of it. And so you'll recall, you might recall that in his discussion, he really kind of pointed out and elaborated on all of the other things that they do in this process within the year. So it's a year-long process, and so they're assessing the properties on site in theory, but then there's a whole lot of, um, the calculations and, and sort of more the office work that has to be done.
Right. All of those things of which, Clarissa, they did two years ago as well. In addition to physically inspecting a certain number of our properties. That's the piece they are not doing.
I think my COVID has forced them to be more reactive, meaning they're looking at new construction, they're looking at hold permits and looking at that instead of concentrating on the 20% of the houses to physically inspect. And so I think you're having a problem with the fact that it's a lot less expensive to work at a desktop to assess the value of 20% of the properties if you don't have to physically get in a car and drive. And so cutting it down to a year and then doing an RFP, what if it comes back and kicks us in the tail? What if the, what if the RFP from Rolfe, for example, is $30,000? Do you think Hennepin County is going to come back with welcome hands, or are they going to say it's now $30,000?
That was kind of my fear as well.
Don't get me wrong. I, I agree with you. I think, I think, I think it's, uh, it's unreasonable to think that, that their physical hours are, are less doing it remotely than physically, so.
But didn't they say that they were going to get back to the, to the physical?
According to this, they are, but it's, but they're, 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 they're concentrating on new construction and hold permits, are they not? They're not, they're not doing that, that 20% where they concentrate on an entire neighborhood or a cross-section of the city or whatever the case may be. So they're still doing 20%, but most of it is being done desktop.
Right.
Which they can do from their living room.
And their, their argument is that they did the entire town, basically, over a two-year period.
But that was also in 17. We're back into that, we're back into that quintile again, so.
Right.
There's a lot of language in the contract that talks about six months and this and that and everything. I think, I think, I think we could, I think we can probably approve this contract and get a major head start on doing RFPs so that we know going into the final year of the contract if we're, if we go back to a private assessment company. So I would agree just to not rock the boat at this point. We have some fixed costs, and let's leave it. My, my thoughts.
Yeah, I agree. I think it gives us four months if we want to get out for any reason. So if for some reason we don't agree with their new price, then we can go out for RFP.
So you read into this that if they come back and say it's $6,500, we can?
As long as we give 120 days prior notice.
Missed that.
So we're not committed for the four years as long as we give 120-day notice, correct? Okay, that's what I thought I read too, but then I was.
I thought it had to be over $7,500.
It's very wordy.
Yeah.
That's why we have Scott.
I read that if it was over $7,500, we had an option to opt out.
For any reason.
Okay. Well, theirs are, at any point then, within the next year, we could submit an RFP to find out if we're getting
Yeah.
Cover our bases. You're sure of that?
No, but ask God. I mean, it says right there.
He's an attorney in the house.
That's what the English says to me. I don't know if that's lawyer's reasons correct, but.
I don't want to get into that. I, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't asked to review that agreement. I can look at it if needed, if needed.
It's fine.
I, I, I trust Caitlin.
And I quote, "For any reason upon providing 120 days prior written notice to any other party, we may remove." Get out of the agreement.
That sounds pretty good, right?
I thought.
It's not too legalese. I don't, I don't have a degree.
You can't spin that. You can't spin that. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, I agree as well. We should.
Make sure that's documented in the minutes.
It's not legal advice, so I need to disclaim that.
All right. Is anyone comfortable then making the motion to approve an agreement, um, A2010416 with Hennepin County for Assessment Services for Assessment Years 2021 through 2024?
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. All right. Next item of business, we will begin with our new business, and I'm going to turn this over to our planner, and we will start with the site plan for KO Storage 5305 Pioneer Creek Drive.
Yes, great. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. First item coming before you tonight, after being considered by the Planning Commission at their last regularly scheduled meeting, was a request for site plan approval to allow construction of three additional storage buildings on the property located at 5305 Pioneer Creek Drive. The property itself is zoned industrial, guided by the city's comprehensive plan as industrial. It's approximately just under, or approximately three acres, just under three acres in size. There are five existing buildings on the property. The property itself is located right at the end of Pioneer Creek Drive where Manchester ties in on the east side. And the, the property itself has been historically used for onsite mini-storage in the industrial zoning district. Mini-self-storage is conditional use, and as such, the applicant came to the city earlier this year to, to seek a conditional use permit, which covered not only the existing buildings that were on the site, they were converting the use of the easternmost building on the site to indoor mini-storage. And then at that time, we also said that we were pulling the entirety of the site into that conditional use permit, so we could allow the entire site as onsite mini-storage, noting that they would likely come in and convert that outdoor storage area into some additional buildings. So that's exactly what they are doing. They are asking the city to consider the expansion of the indoor, the mini-self-storage onto that western portion via the construction of three new, uh, storage buildings. The buildings themselves are approximately 3,000 square feet in overall size, and the way that the applicant has laid out the buildings, they would meet all applicable building setbacks as well as have the requisite 50 feet of separation, I'm sorry, 25 feet of separation between the buildings, which is shown on the site plan. So that, that would apply not only to the separation from the existing buildings, but between the proposed buildings. City did, uh, does site plan review for all new, uh, new construction within commercial development. In this particular case, we go through a more detailed review. We look at kind of all aspects of the city's zoning code as being, as it applies to the proposed development. We look at layout setbacks, parking, landscaping, lighting, architecture of, and architecture of the buildings. And I'm going to highlight just kind of the, the key components of this particular proposed development with the proposed three buildings as relates to kind of site plan, layout, landscaping, lighting. Those are all areas that we feel the applicant has provided information that shows that it can be compliant. I had one question on the lighting plan that I think we can get cleaned up with the client, but for the most part, they've revised the photometric and lighting plan, provide the city with, with the requisite information, and we've noted that that meets the requirement. As relates to the, um, kind of site plan layout, um, issues, when we approved the conditional use permit for the site, it was noted by West Hennepin Public Safety that there's been issues on this site. They'd ultimately like to see the site secured with a fence. The applicant has proposed to install a six-feet-tall, a six-foot-tall chain-link fence on the site. There was a couple of comments provided by Planning Commission relating to this, most notably the frontage along Pioneer Creek and also the eastern side, which has frontage along residential. So this side property line as well as this frontage, and there's questions on whether the material of the fence as chain-link would be acceptable. Planning Commission recommended that it be looked at, that a different material be used on the, uh, what would be the north and east sides of the property and/or whether or not there is a way to tie the fence into the side of this building and use the building as the fence rather than fencing that in. The city also received comments on that particular issue from the property owner, noting that they were concerned about just the appearance and then, you know, a chain-link along that residential line. And so with that, Planning Commission made a recommendation on the fence that the applicant look at an alternative material along Pioneer Creek and the, uh, east property line and/or an alternative method on that east property line. I am looking for council direction on that particular issue, just to kind of confirm that and provide more concrete definition. One of the things that we talked about was just changing the type of fence from a just galvanized chain-link to a vinyl-coated, so something like a black vinyl-coated chain-link fence, which would have a different appearance, uh, appearance along the public sides of that development. We noted that along the, the south property line and the west property line over here, there really wasn't any potential impact, and that, uh, galvanized chain-link was acceptable as a form of security. And then the other item that was discussed more in depth by the Planning Commission is the building materials for the three new buildings. So the existing buildings have an appearance that, that looks like that. It's a kind of stucco panel on the top two-thirds portion, and then a brick veneer wainscote on the bottom. In the applicant's proposal for the new buildings, uh, there was a couple of things that are different. One, the roof line that's being proposed is different. It's a flatter roof line. And in fact, on one of the buildings, it's a single-pitch roof. Planning Commission discussed that, ultimately said they found that that could be acceptable, but they wanted the colors to match. So they wanted a red roof along with the, um, materials that are similar to, to the existing buildings. So that would be a brick wainscoting along the bottom. Then there was a discussion that, uh, that they had about then that upper material, noting that the buildings themselves on the upper would be, um, a steel rather than a stucco. Planning Commission made a recommendation that if they could match the brick wainscote, uh, they were okay with a steel upper, but they wanted the colors to be consistent with the existing buildings that are there. So you're talking about a flatter pitch on the roof, you're talking about a steel upper portion of that building. Really, the visibility is what you see here, this part of the building, but it would be a color to match. And then they would, so they'd match the stucco color, and then they would incorporate a bricks, a, a brick wainscote along that public facade on those three buildings. So Planning Commission, after that discussion, recommended approval to the city council with those noted changes. Those are picked up in the resolution that's attached as well, just noting that this site would have the security fence, and there would be no outdoor storage permitted on this site once this, once these, once this site plan gets approved. That outdoor storage area that exists is going away in favor of, uh, the three new buildings, and there is really no replacement for that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, go into more detail, whatever the council's pleasure. So the applicants are here tonight as well.
Questions for staff?
So with the fence on the east side of the building, um, is there going to be landscaping outside of the fence as well? I know we had discussed that at one point.
So right now, the way that, there is some landscaping right in this area here, and I think the intent would be to go outside of that landscaping and incorporate that side yard into, into the fenced area?
Because if there's landscaping there, I don't think the, the fence is as much of an issue, just if you have the bushes blocking it, so.
So little clarification on that. So the, the trees along that, that property actually belong to the applicants as well.
Correct.
So the homeowners, the property owners to the east have actually recommended that rather than putting a fence out there at all, that they use the back of the building as the fencing, which seems to make a lot more sense, because with, with as tall as that building is over there, a fence isn't going to do anything anyway. I mean, yeah, for security it would work, but a wall would be more secure than a fence anyway. So that was, that was one suggestion that was brought up as well. So the real concern was just making sure from the homeowner that the applicants knew that they owned the trees on that side, um, so that they would take care of them. They understood it was theirs, so.
Okay. Just with regards to security, and I know this isn't a part of it necessarily tonight, but I know at one point we had asked for security cameras to be added in there. Will there be additional cameras added with the three new garages?
Yeah, so there was an upgrade to that system that has been completed, I believe, at this point, and so that would be expanded to the new buildings as well, so.
Great.
And West Hennepin did work on that with, with the applicant.
Okay. Glad to hear that.
Mark, um, at least in our packet, I don't think in the planning packet either, there hasn't been any elevations, per se, of these buildings, how they would look compared to the existing architecture. And, um, my concern is, is it a, is it a cost thing? I mean, these roofs, a, a quarter inch, a quarter inch of slope for every foot. I mean, you're, you're talking as, about as flat as, as flat as you can be. I mean, on a, you're looking at a four-inch, four-inch over half that building, you're only going down four inches. So it's technically flat. It's just enough to, for some snow to melt off and, and rain to run. That's about all you're going to get out of that. Is there a reason why we're not trying to get a 412 pitch or a 512 pitch or something to be consistent with the architecture of the existing five buildings? And then is there also a reason why, I, I know the building that Manor Electric is in, they, they huffed and puffed a number of years ago because they didn't want to have to put up the brick wainscoting on the front of that building, which is across the street. And Planning Commission, City Council ultimately made them, made them do it. And I'm, I'm concerned that, that as much as I'd rather see buildings than open storage, the architectural impact is important to me to try to maintain some consistency within the building or within the structure, the, the site plan, the elevation, so that it doesn't look like it was a, something that was not thought out, so to speak.
Sure.
Is, is there?
The applicant could speak to the cost issue. I mean, I think that's what, they, they buy these prefabricated, so this is a different type of building than the ones that are stick-built on-site. So they were saying, and I'm not going to paraphrase necessarily, but, but yeah, they were saying that this is, this is their, the way that they build the buildings now, they preorder these, and that does then, as it's a kit building, has a different roof line, it has different, um, uh, you know, different impacts on the materials. Now, with that said, the Planning Commission went back and said, well, they want, they want the brick wainscote, and that was said, that that wasn't an issue to add the brick wainscote. The upper material would still be steel, and there was discussion whether they should put the stucco panels on versus the steel. Ultimately, planning said they didn't think that it was as big of an issue, as long as the color blended or matched. So they went with the recommendation to allow the steel, but with the brick wainscote. There was quite a bit of discussion on the roof as well, and that is something that the Planning Commission went back and forth on. Ultimately, they said, okay, uh, we think that you could go with that. They didn't prefer that. I will note, the Planning Commission, I think, had a long discussion on that, but that was ultimately, they, they agreed that they could, they could get along with that.
If, if I had my brothers, I'd have some pitch to the roof. Steel siding above the wainscoting would be fine, a beige or a white or something to complement the, the stucco that you have right now. The roof, which are all red, would be still red, garnet red, and matching garage doors, so that it's a contiguous, uh, system. And the, and then, of course, the, the stone or the wainscoting down below. And this, this steel and metal systems out of Georgia, they do customize to me building codes and zoning codes, and so it's not a, well, I'm, I'm ordering kit 101.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if you want brick on the facade and you want a pitch to the roof,
Yeah.
they will, they will do it. I, I drove by there today, and I mean, it's, it's pretty consistent. They're going to look like a sore thumb, and I, I, I know that it's probably a money. They'll do it, but at what cost?
So, so everything that you mentioned, I think, is, with the exception of the pitch, matches. So they, they have the brick, you know, the only thing that doesn't match is the pitch. But wasn't there also a discussion about you can't, you're not going to really be able to see the, the roof due to the elevation of that corner?
Yeah, there was, there was some discussion. I mean, the elevation of the road, so Pioneer Creek, as you get down to, I'm using my hand, as you get down here, you know, it slopes out much, much further to get to that. So being able from the, from in here to see the tops. So there's a discussion about that too, but.
I thought, you know, oh my, we don't have to worry about anything because there's already 40 evergreen trees in there, but as I looked at the site plan, I figured those evergreen trees have to probably come out.
They're all going away.
Yeah.
They're all going away.
Yeah. So, now they're going to put four trees there to, to landscape it. So, you'll see it going down, going down or going up.
Yeah, you'll, you'll definitely see it from this vantage point up here.
Yes.
As you come down, you're not going to be able to see kind of these last building, you're not going to be able to see the roofline and as you're coming east, it's going to be hard, but you're definitely going to have a viewpoint of it.
But remember that, that, that third building, the one furthest to the west, is long and narrow and it, yeah, and it, it, you know, it.
It goes out.
It goes out. It doesn't, it doesn't sit back where the other ones sit back.
Right.
I mean, it's, we're talking about setbacks from the road.
Right. Right.
And that's why they, it just keeps migrating further north. So, you'll see it, but.
Well, I hear what you're saying. I feel like planning's really thought this through and with the color schemes being the same, knowing the location, it's not on Highway 12, it's on Pioneer. I personally am comfortable with it and want to support planning's recommendation while acknowledging your concern.
With the, with the flat roof.
Yeah, which is the biggest change and will be noticeable. Other questions for staff or does anyone want to hear from the owners or questions for them? Okay. With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-19, approving site plan review to allow three additional mini self-storage buildings to be constructed on the property located at 5305 Pioneer Creek Drive.
Should we discuss the fence first? I think Mark needs a little more direction.
I need direction on the fence.
Oh, that's true, you do, don't you?
Yeah.
Because you said it was in there, but it wasn't clear.
It's in there, we have a condition in there covering it. We just, I just want the council to provide that.
And the north and the east side, you're looking for?
Really what I'm looking for, so, you know, the preference of the adjacent property owner is that they use a building. I would note there's utilities and landscaping there and they'd have to put another door in that fence to go outside the fence to come back and maintain that. So, I understand why they'd want to put the fence where they're showing it. I'm more, from the Planning Commission, you know, if they want to leave the fence on the outside of those landscape, on the outside of landscaping, Planning Commission wanted it to be a different material than galvanized. And then they also talked about recommending on the, on the north side of the property that different material. I just want to confirm if that's the council's direction, if you concur with that, if you have feelings on that one way or the other, that, that would be all I'd want to clarify.
So, just adding the black galvanized?
So, right now, it'd be galvanized six-foot chain link and there was concern on the public side, what, what that looks like, you know, in an industrial area. So, we had talked about a vinyl coated, you know, just same chain link, so it all kind of ties together, but just one's got vinyl coat, one's got galvanized, so.
Comments for staff?
Did the homeowners on the other side have strong feelings about the fencing?
They just were concerned that if it was six-foot chain link and/or if it had patina wire on top, that it would have a certain impact or effect on the residential. I think a six-foot chain link fence is fairly typical for residential properties, is, you know, separation between, so. And I think if you'd go to that next level fence, you know, black, a black vinyl or something, that just kind of takes away the commercialized nature, gives them something a little bit more. So, and, you know, I mean, the recommendation on the, on the building wall is good. I just, in some ways, if you were the property owner on the other side of that, you'd be going, well, you're going to get to use 12 feet of my property report. You know, I mean, it's going to kind of feel like you're pulling it in, but. Yeah, I, I know that the applicants and you guys can speak up on it. They said they'd prefer to use the wall, but, but the concern was from the homeowner was that they still knew they had to maintain the property because they own that property out behind it.
I like the idea of using the wall, if that's possible. Otherwise, I think the black coated would be fine.
But the black would just be on the north and the east if you don't use the wall.
Yeah.
And not on the south and west, that would be just whatever.
I agree with that direction as well, the north and east, if you don't use the wall and.
Okay. I think that's plenty of clarification. I think we're good.
Okay. So, we had a first, was there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Since I interrupted.
No, thank you.
No, appreciate that, thank you.
That was a good call, very important detail. All right, and because this is a resolution, it will be roll call vote.
Aye.
Delon?
Aye.
Moskuski?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five to zero. The next item of business is Site Plan Community House, 5300 Highway 12.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. Next item for consideration is also being brought to you after being considered at the last regular Planning Commission meeting. It's a request for site plan review for the renovation of the existing commercial building as well as development of a new building and associated site improvements for the property at 5300. The property itself is on the mixed-use Bud Avenue. It's guided by the city's comprehensive plan as mixed-use and it's approximately one and a half acres in overall site. I think the, the council's familiar with the, this site and the building that we often refer to as the old schoolhouse building. We've seen a couple of site plan proposals over the years. We've actually approved one for the renovation of this site and this building and those never went any further than just being approved by city. So, in this case, we've got an applicant that approached the city about the possibility of repurposing this building, renovating the site, adding a new commercial building to the property as well as a whole mix of new kind of landscape gardens and landscape structures to the subject property. So, we met with the, the applicants on a number of occasions, kind of review the, the requirements of the city, talk through site plan review process and just walk through kind of the overall issues or considerations that relate to this site, talk about some of the standards that the city has in its design guidelines and just, and just work on development of this, this property. So, with that, the applicant has put together a proposal that shows, and I'm going to go, I thought I had it number two, but I think I have it here, that shows the, the kind of redevelopment of that property in a manner that would add a new commercial building to the, what would be the north side of the site as well as a landscape pavilion that would be out on the front corner, the southeast corner of the property. And then, as well as cleaning up the existing building and the overall site. And so, this is just a rendering that shows the new building, kind of how it fits into the site, the proposed landscape structure as well as the existing building. So, the applicant put together a site plan for the site that shows that considerable amount of the existing site would be renovated, there'd be new parking added to the site. So, that would be a kind of full redo of the existing bituminous parking lot area, the carving out of new landscape areas, the addition of sidewalks that would connect the existing building to the new buildings as well as the pavilion, and then a new landscape plan, which would be kind of an, an overall full landscape plan for the site. We looked at a couple of kind of key components of the repurposing of this site and the proposed site plan. One thing we looked at as we laid out the site is how parking would, would be accommodated with the building. We noted that in this particular case, the applicant's proposing 41 new parking spaces and we looked at various types of uses that could be used or that could utilize the spaces, either in the existing building or the proposed building, including a restaurant parking or a restaurant area within the new building. And we found that with the restaurant, the office-retail mix, which I think has, has the highest number of spaces that would be required, the applicant is providing just a little bit more than the, the number of spaces required in that 41. So, we were looking at something in the neighborhood of maybe 38 spaces if it was to be a office-retail with a restaurant, and I broke that down in the report. The other aspect of this site that we looked at is the building architecture. So, going back to this building, the city has design guidelines for new buildings that are constructed in the mixed-use Bud Avenue. And we talk about architecture, the architectural guidelines. We're talking about certain requirements for materials and then certain requirements for fenestration, so openings, windows, doors, other accents on the facade of a building. So, with the architectural guidelines that the city has, I mean, it really was set up in looking at buildings that have street frontage. So, we have that kind of first floor, street level, and then we have sides and rear. And we lay out what those percentages are in the ordinance. What we noted is that the way that this new building sits to the, to the north of the existing building and that it's not really on the street frontage, we talked about whether or not the fenestration requirements, which in this particular case is 40%, openings, windows and doors, needs to be met by the applicant. So, Planning Commission had a fairly lengthy discussion. They, they challenged the applicant to go back and look at maybe creating some additional windows and some, some openings on kind of the two public-facing or visible sides as well as maybe adding some additional elements to that front, that front door. And so, in doing that, I'm going to zoom in on this building, the applicant did go back and kind of looked at the openings on, on both of those front-facing sides and it, they did increase a little bit the, the openings on that. And then they also added kind of this marquee area over the top of the front door that would provide just a little bit more, you know, architectural, architectural, I don't know, characteristics to the front of that building that would just break up that facade a little bit more, highlight where the front door is and then, and then provide just that accent. And so, with that, Planning Commissioners felt that because of the location of the building, its location's set back and its, its distance from Highway 12, that the, the way that the applicant had laid out the building made some sense and they felt that the fenestration requirement and the architectural, that our state and the architectural guidelines were satisfied by the applicant and that they didn't need to take it all the way to that 40% level. So, with that, we had discussions ultimately on landscaping, the layout of the parking spaces and then some minor changes to the way that the, to the way that the site laid out, landscaping along the Highway 12 frontage. So, Planning Commission had looked at removing a couple of spaces in this area, which was done, adding landscaping to the Highway 12 frontage on the parking spaces, which was done. And then, lastly, looked at the, the landscape pavilion and noted that they'd like to see just a little bit more detail added to that landscape pavilion. The applicant has come back with adding some brick piers that would be kind of complimentary to the brick on the rest of the building to try to enhance that overall pavilion. So, with those changes that were noted, the applicant revised the plans following Planning Commission, review and discussion, and Planning Commission recommended approval of that, of that plan with the new building, with the parking, with the landscaping and with the lighting as proposed. There are conditions that were included in the packet which have been outlined in the attached resolution. I want to note that there was one question just concerning the use of that landscape pavilion. And I would ask if council was comfortable that we add a condition clarifying the use and just giving examples of what would be permitted in that pavilion. So, I wanted to just touch on that briefly because it wasn't specifically spelled out in the, in the other, in the packet or in the, in the consideration by planning, but I had a conversation with the owner, we talked through that and as it was described to the city and as we understood it, that landscape pavilion would be for the purpose, for, for the use of the tenant occupants of the buildings on that property. So, if you had a leased space in that building, you would be able to utilize that landscape pavilion for things like outdoor classrooms. So, if you provided lessons or, or instruction or something like that, you might be able to go out there and hold a class. If you had a cafe or market in the building, you might then have people who go out and grab something to eat and go sit in the pavilion. They, they would also potentially use that for occasional events such as an art festival or art fair or some sort of a craft sale or something like that. Again, tenant occupants of the building only and occasional, you know, kind of retail sales use or uses outdoor. I crafted a condition that I think could be added. I would, I would probably have Scott tweak it a little bit for us, but we could add a recommendation to just include the use recommendation or the use condition as an additional condition to the resolution if the council was comfortable. But I want to at least bring that topic up. It was something that we talked about just a little bit and I thought it was good to clarify. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant's here as well tonight.
That was actually my one question was the use of that. I love the proposed plan and I think it'd be great to see this face in use. So, I would be in favor of allowing them, you know, kind of a broad use of that outdoor. You know, I know they've had like the flower sales and things like that before and so I would be in favor of writing that into allowing them to use that space for retail use. I think because our main concerns were often the safety of the parking lot. So, if we, if everything else is, you know, put together and it's not just the landscape pavilion, you know, I think I would approve using that, giving them broad space for that.
Other feedback or questions for staff or the landowner?
What was your concern there that they'd be renting it out to non-tenant?
Yeah, so we've had the, we've had, we've had the seasonal sales and other things like that, right? And so, I think the intent was not to accommodate off-site retail sales, but rather people that rent in the space, that they can utilize that space for things. And, and also to just talk about the things that we think are approved and, and one of those would not be kind of permanent retail sales out of that pavilion, so. I just wanted to clarify that, so it was, it was.
And I too love the concept and I think the fact that the second building is tucked back and a little bit to the west, the fenestration issue becomes a non-issue, especially with the, somewhere in here, I found a landscape plan that you're not even going to be able to see most of that building anyways, so. We've seen a lot of things come through that, that, that property and this is by far hands down the best. Kudos, I'm in favor of it.
I, I am as well, but I do like your, your thought process on the pavilion because at first, I, I didn't even think about it in the Planning Commission meeting, but I'm sitting here looking at it and saying, I don't want this to be a permanent location for the flower shop that we've been approving unconditional, you know, each year. I want that tied to a resident.
Any other questions or comments for staff or the landlord?
I do have the condition kind of crafted, if you want me to read it, if that's something that the council would support.
That'd be great.
Landscape pavilion will be limited for use by tenant occupants of the buildings located on the subject property. Examples of permitted uses of the pavilion include the following: outdoor classes, outdoor dining, occasional art fair, market. Any use of the landscape pavilion that is determined to be materially different than those examples listed above would be subject to the review and consideration by the city council. I'm sure Scott can fix that a little bit, but that would be, that'd be condition number three that we would add to the resolution if the council was accepting of, of that or language like that fixed by the attorney.
I think it's a great benefit. It'll draw, I think, more tenants for that building.
Yeah.
Right.
And I'm assuming with they, this very creative design parking lot, everything outside of it will be sod or seed or something along that line?
It's all lawn area or landscape beds?
Yeah.
Yeah, really breaks up that parking area.
It's going to look nice.
You probably saw in the packet. I thought, I thought it was a good illustration. You can just see if you kind of compare the two in the pink line, that's what's there today in terms of hardcover and you can see how much softening, you know, this is really going to do for that side. I mean, all of this interior space here is all getting carved out as lawn, all of this back area and quite a bit of this side area over here. Now, it's going to be a substantial reduction.
I'm excited.
So am I.
I think it's going to be great. It's going to be a great addition. All right, so let me take a stab at this. All right, so let me take a stab at this and then can correct me before we make it official. So I am looking for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty, approving site plan to review to allow a new commercial building and associated site improvements on the property located at fifty-three hundred Highway twelve, also adding a condition number three pending Attorney Landsman's approval as read by, uh, Planner Cultis. Is that correct? Did I get everything?
That's good.
All right, so with that, uh, looking for someone to make that motion.
She'll move.
Moved by DeLuca?
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. I will turn it over to our administrator. Cahill?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Moskuski?
Aye.
Delong?
Aye.
DeLuca?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five to zero. All right, thank you everyone for your work and creativity on that. Next item of business is another site plan review, review for Ann Rosting, sixteen seventy-five Spring Avenue. And I will turn that back over to you.
Yes, thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, Council. Uh, this, this is also an item coming before you after being considered at the Planning Commission. Uh, we had a busy meeting last month. Uh, this is site plan review and a variance, uh, to allow reduced parking setback from Highway twelve, uh, for the property at sixteen seventy-five Spring. The, I'm sorry, seventeen sixty-five Spring. The property itself's mixed-use downtown. It's guided by the comprehensive plan as mixed-use. It's approximately twelve thousand square feet and overall size are point two nine acres. Relatively small, uh, property. This property is on the south side of Highway twelve, just at the, um, what would be the north and, uh, west corner of Spring Avenue and Highway twelve. Um, all right, what would be the south and west corner, I guess, if you cross those, uh, two roads. Um, so this is a vacant site, uh, that was combined by the, uh, previous owner of the property after going through site plan review pre, uh, for a similar kind of commercial retail, uh, use of this property. Several years ago, there was a lot of discussion about the, the size of this property, uh, the setback from Highway twelve, um, and some of the limiting factors that that, uh, created. In this particular case, the applicant approached the city about the possibility of developing the property and constructing a new commercial building, uh, and the associated site improvement. Uh, the new commercial building proposed on the, on the property, uh, has an overall square footage of two thousand two hundred and eighty-eight. Uh, fourteen hundred and fifty of that is a, uh, office space. Eight hundred and thirty-two is garage storage and/or kind of meeting area. Uh, kind of a multipurpose, uh, end to that. And so the applicant, um, put together a plan that shows, um, the redevelopment of this property. Uh, so you can see that there would be, um, off the end of the cul-de-sac, there'd be access driveway that comes in. There'd be parking located along Highway twelve here. The proposed building, um, is located on what would be the south side of the site. And then there would be a drive aisle, uh, that would come in and allow service to that building. Uh, the applicant put together some building elevations. Um, front elevation of that building, uh, looks like this. So this is the side that would face Highway twelve. It's comprised of a stone base or, or, um, kind of a wainscote, if you will, board and batten smart side, uh, as well as board and batten smart side above and then, uh, asphalt shingle roof. You can see that it's a fairly narrow building that has, um, kind of a pitched roof on the, on the backside, which, which would be the south side and then a little bit of a, a gable on the front. And then they have an architectural, uh, kinda awning feature that goes along the front side of that building. Um, the, the applicant provides site plan. You can see it's office space primarily, a reception area, a conference room, um, mechanical restrooms, and then that garage area that I was talking about that the applicant described could be used kinda multipurpose. Uh, so in reviewing the, uh, the proposed site, uh, we went through the same kinda process. We looked at parking, uh, as it is required for the type of, of use. So looking at about fifteen hundred square feet. Uh, we have a requirement of one space for two hundred and fifty. That requires only a couple of spaces. Uh, but the applicant is proposing more spaces, noting that they could have, uh, some, some classes or some other kinda trainings that occur on the site. And so they proposed, um, twelve off-street, um, and one, I guess you could call garage space. Uh, we did note that the city in our downtown does allow on-street parking as well. So if there's on-street spaces on Spring Avenue, we would count, uh, those towards, um, the overall site. Um, so with the, um, discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, one of the things that we talked about was a setback from Highway twelve. We noted that the city requires a fifty-foot setback, uh, from the highway. And we noted that that would, um, essentially render the entire site unusable. We've had a discussion similar to that previously. Planning Commission recommended, uh, creating a green space along Highway twelve and then landscaping it. The applicant has redrawn the plan, which was not in the past.